We move to approve the agenda. Entertain a motion to move new business ahead of old business agenda.
I'll move.
Support. Support. Okay, it's like there's supports and on pause we'll move new business item in front of the old business item. We move to the approval of the minutes. November second minutes. Review of the new application if there's any issues with this one that I found. Let's see what I said. So many red pointed existing positions of officers.
I didn't see. Hope we approved the November meeting minutes.
Is there a support? I vote. Oh, yeah. There? I'll support. Favor approving the November second two thousand twenty-two minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Move to the December thirteen minutes. And receive some feedback for items. Mine's twenty-one, twenty-six, and twenty-seven. What do you think? Twenty-two?
Twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-six, and twenty-seven.
To change the complaint or complaints to.
Concerns. Concerns. Concerns.
Can you go over those numbers again?
Twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-six, and twenty-seven.
No, you can.
So should read. He also was concerned.
Any items? Scanning through, I didn't see any issues further out.
I don't see anything else. So approval is amended.
Motion to approve the minute says amended.
Support.
Support. On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So move to the end of the public next. And I just want to mention before everyone's awareness that Zach Michaels is no longer with Carlisle Wirtman. I think he found somewhere else to work, et cetera. So they are replacing him. And Doug Lwan, who was here at some of the visiting sessions, will be covering for Zach. And we'll be at our next workshop meeting. So just an update for everybody. I know there's many of you that probably got to know Zach pretty well.
He was a good guy.
We all would like to help him, yes.
Yeah, you will, for sure.
Yeah, so this time move to calls of the public. A couple of comment this time.
Are there two different calls that you're going to make?
Yeah, there's.
Come up here to the front, please.
Like there's one prior to the agenda in our business and then at the end here.
Okay. I'm at the end.
Would be appropriate for the solar event on the second call.
The first one is for items on the agenda.
Okay.
And the second one, the one before we close, is for anything, any other items that you'd like to bring up.
All right. Go ahead, looks like he's standing. Go ahead.
I have to go first tonight.
I. You can state your name. I know why I miss know you.
Steve Hasbrook, living on Fossett Road. I was on the planning commission for many, many years during the time that we wrote the agribusiness ordinance. So I wanted to talk about the new business item as it relates to mainly one item, which is the fifty-fifty as far as where the products had to originate from. Now, I always felt that that was never really a good wording for that ordinance. There's a lot of businesses that rely on an annual crop and, you know, that's all good for, you know, fitting into that, but what the applicants are doing with logs is way different as far as a crop rotation. Now, I read through the business plan as it relates to how they're going to acquire the logs, which I think it's ideal what they're doing by getting them from the tree service people and wherever else they can get them rather than harvesting on any one or two or four parcels because trees that need to be utilized for what they do with them, you know, that's going to be spotty where those come from. And I think it's just the right way to do so. You guys need to probably allow for not being strict on the fifty-fifty. Your planner obviously built it like four or five times in his write-up, you know, but he didn't ever say whether it was a game, you know, end or not, you know. So I just hope you take into account really what they're utilizing is a renewable product and trees, you know, they can be cut up for firewood. A lot of those big trees that, you know, get taken down by the road commission, they just push them off into the ditch and they rot there forever because they're hard to handle. But I, I, I think, you know, people such as this gentleman, I've never met him, I drove by the property just a short time ago, but they obviously have an entrepreneurial spirit, which I appreciate that in our township and, you know, for those that haven't been around our ordinance very long, almost any business that started here in the last twenty years, the ordinance pretty much was written so that they could go into business because nothing fits, you know, the stuff that, you know, us brainiacs that sat in the, you know, up front there and write rules and, you know, everything has to be adjusted as far as what I've seen through the years. So, and the master plan, can I talk about that or is there a timeout?
Yeah, if you could quickly go ahead.
There's stuff in there that I think needs to be improved on, which obviously you guys are going to have, you know, plenty more time to work on. I understand that it's, the goal is to have it done by the end of the year is what I've kind of heard, but, but, you know, in the package shows the future land use or existing land use, there's quite a bit in there that obviously isn't accurate what was currently on there. You know, like around the lakes, it shows only like half of, half of lots as being, you know, residential homes, which I don't know what the black is that I don't know mother of life, but it's totally not accurate. But, okay, thank you.
Got a question for you. If you'd like. Could you? Yeah. Do you, it sounds like you're very knowledgeable with this so far. Do you have a list of each thing? Because I mean, you said, you were talking very generic. Do you have more of a defined list that you can email us?
Do you want to know why I don't have a list? You know, there was only very limited time to talk in the visioning session. And you guys were the ones that decided you needed to redo the whole shebang, which I thought was BS myself, but, you know, if you guys want to do that, you're in for a long haul because you're going to have to do a lot of ordinance updates too, so.
Right.
But, you know, I'll be around to do some filming. I was thinking about waiting till the public hearing at the end to let it happen, but I'm not sure.
Except just as we'll be talking more about the existing land use map and working talent in our workshop next Wednesday.
Definitely. Anyone else?
Public comment?
Okay, I am just, and I'm going to jump.
Say your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Kim Frappolosi with Deer Park Court. Why are we messing with an ordinance on a random project before we have the master plan done on where we want to put this stuff? So how do you know how to alter an ordinance?
Who has my answer a few people's questions today?
So basically, we have current standards for utility-grade solar developments.
Right.
The whole intent of this is to make sure, because if you've noticed what's going on with some of the other townships in the area, they're being approached and they are being developed as large-scale solar facilities.
Right.
We want to get on top of it and make sure that we beat any potential development that comes in to make sure that our standards are going to be as tight as they possibly can be so that they're not going to create nuisance factors.
Okay.
It is not something that can be outright prohibited, but we can limit it in terms of what areas we allow it in. Right now, we allow it in certain commercial industrial type zoning districts, but we also allow it in farming residential.
Right.
That's going to be the primary area of discussion is whether or not we really need to include it in farming residential.
Right, okay, okay, no. Okay, cool. So it was a concern, not a complaint.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
This is a concern also to Edropeta, fully correct, and to the gentleman that spoke previously, just so everyone knows, we have tried and offered to do committees and wanting to help and do the research for the things that we've talked about, and we've not been allowed to. So as far as people getting involved when you come to the workshop, it's still public comment time. It's not a workshop of the people being allowed to participate. I really hope that you guys somehow will be able to, and again, I offer to stay back and not be on any committee at all if that's what the concern is by the supervisor. But I think the people are willing and wanting to help. I think it should be honored that some committees put together, give us some assignments, give them some research, things to do, they could be helping with this. One of the things I want to bring up tonight is the new, let's see, it's on the agenda, and I'm sorry, I can't pronounce your last name, I just don't like, and I have read your proposal and I think it's amazing what they're doing, and I look forward to seeing them in the community. I hope everything goes through without a hitch. I am going to bring up though, again, I think it's ironic that you guys just approved meeting minutes for the Peabody public hearing, which is what, almost four months ago that you guys sent it to the board to be approved? And in that time, several residents have made concerns known to the board and we get the standard, thank you for your comment. My question is, why should someone like this have to go through all this process, procedure, triangulate by the ordinances, do what you guys want to do, when other people, and I know you guys aren't doing this, but other people are allowed to just carry on, have events, don't have to post, no alcohol, can have events that they told you guys in the meeting minutes that they weren't going to be doing. They were supposed to get approval from the fire department, all of that, and it just, it seems like it goes on deaf ears. So I don't understand why we have a planning commission if the rules aren't being applied fairly to everyone. If I was someone that wanted to start a business here that involved a lot of regulations, et cetera, I would just start it. I would start it, and it would probably come after the township and sue them for not treating me fairly as they treat everyone else. So my letter that was sent to the board, three letters, and even safety concerns, and I copied you on, Rich, I just, and I copied also Ross, and I assume that you share it with the rest of the commission, but I don't know what you have to do to get an answer around here or some kind of input or conversation, because those were very valid concerns. Again, I, and I'm going to go back and say that when I saw Mr. Peabody's presentation, I thought it was amazing. I think it's a great thing, I really do. I think it's a great thing for the community. But if you guys aren't, if the township isn't enforcing that they comply with these rules and looking the other way, what message does it send to the community? For one thing, it's not fair, and second of all, I think it opens you up to a lot of, you know, possible lawsuits. I don't know what you can do about that. I thought that the process was, what you approved here was you sent it to the board, right? So that's where it went. The board had several opportunities for meetings that they said known business, and then they still haven't done anything about it. And as far as they know, it has to come publicly in a meeting. Are they meeting behind closed doors and deciding what to do with Peabodys? That doesn't seem fair to me either. So, I don't know.
Got it. Are you done?
Pardon me?
Are you done with, are you done with your public comment?
I am.
Oh, yeah, so.
Is that okay? More time?
No, no, I was just going to answer regarding the Peabody.
Okay, thank you.
We made a motion to recommend conditional approvals.
Correct.
Until the conditions are met, they can't be, it can't be brought to the board for approval.
So it did not go to the board?
It hasn't.
Okay, and my mistake, I understood.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, so they need their system dealing with you.
They have to satisfy the conditions we placed upon the recommendation.
And you guys are fully aware that they're operating and they're doing things that wasn't even in their proposal?
It will all be addressed.
Okay.
The board goes to the board.
Good, and you know that it sends a message to the community? Okay, thank you.
That sounded like a complaint.
Public comment. Thank you.
This is really odd, I'd rather have a podium, why don't you do the podium?
No one will answer.
They haven't moved it back.
Supervisor, would you like me to put you on film for my channel?
My name is Stephanie Schulte. My name is Stephanie Schulte. I live, he's asking for the podium.
You gotta dress them, I don't think she'll hear it.
Yeah, I'll be my guest, I can speak louder. So my name is Stephanie Schulte, I'm a resident of Tyrone Township, and I'm here with my husband, and we would like to express our concerns about the utility scale solar facility discussion. Our concerns in regards to this discussion starts with Tyrone Township recognizing the positive impact solar energy systems promise, no promise, not concrete benefits, without outlining a thorough list of the known negative, if not devastating, impacts. While impressive listed comments address many potential issues with land use and attempt to, and attempt to provide protections, we endeavor to quickly point out some finer points that may not enter into the conversation. Additionally, while courtesy review states the district does not support the development of utility scale solar facilities in the farming residential zoning districts, towards the end of that document, there appears a reversal of contradictory solutions by allowing exactly that, including lands enrolled in PA one sixteen programs. Does the staff realize utility scale solar developments are the largest scale industrial complex systems requiring hundreds of acres of cleared land spreading across several square miles? The virtual sea of panels is breathtaking if not altogether terrifying. No token hedgerel will hide this monument to climate hysteria. No amount of I told you so will diminish the devastating impacts cleverly avoided by manipulated studies and impact assessments often controlled by sympathetic investigators. Hundreds of acres of trees and grazing lands will never again provide the shade, food, groundwater protection, or wildlife shelter. The millions of gallons of water required for the maintenance of the panels will not automatically self-restore. Aquifers have their limits. The devastation to fragile ecosystems and the mining of precious minerals to build the batteries to back up the intermittent power production will never be recovered. The fact that birds are being burned to death by the heat rating from these solar panels exceeding hundreds of degrees are said to be a necessary evil to protect future birds is nonsensical. The data available proving these mass avian deaths is current and growing. The proof of salvation of these animals is purely emotional conjecture calling what is real a lie and what is common and what is completely unknown a truth that has become the altar on which is sacrificed all common logic and empirical evidence. Some final facts to consider as you investigate potential future ordinance compliance. Bald eagles have been removed from the endangered species list. Only one bat is included for protection despite the many different families that occupy our area. Only one sandhill crane is on the protected list. This particular bird also does not reside with the many sandhill cranes that call this entire county its home. How convenient. Though we are an amazing bird sanctuary and for a wide diverse group of raptors, cranes, bats, and songbirds that nest and live and depend on our beautiful country. Final important facts. It is illegal in the state of Michigan to have a vested interest in any solar or wind turbine project, including anometers, whether directly or through a relative, and at the same time being voting member on a commissioners board. Solar does not provide a fraction of the energy required and costs associated with its production and maintenance are gargantuan by comparison. Please, please, please expand your knowledge and perform due diligence on this profoundly controversial matter. We are providing a sheet with video links and information to help direct you to thoughtful research. So we have a copy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very well said.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Thank you. Was it back? Yes. Yes, I'm glad. Anyone?
Is there any other public comment this time?
Scott. Scott Dietrich, White Lake Grove. I know you got, the comment was leaving, I don't want to really push it too much because I know they're almost done for the season. Peabody's will be done here. The only problem is they've had months to get started and we got nothing. And my problem, my problem is that, and I've already found this out from what happened down the street by house, and the township had to chase them anyway, it was your farm. It was the only yearly thing, they just kept wanting to do what they wanted to do. So if he's going to act like that now, what's he going to be like in the future? This agribusiness, no, we don't change our, agribusiness is agribusiness. We don't want to expand it anymore. If you don't live next to where it's going in, it's okay. I don't know exactly what's going on there, but I think it's in the same direct area that we're living in Center Road, that general area.
It's east of there.
Yeah, so we already had a big problem with the wedding barn that was going to be proposed there, neighbors were really, I think they were proposing outdoor events or something here, and this didn't be, talking about it. I'd like to get into more detail exactly what's going on there. But no, I think, my dad fired. My dad sold produce. My dad wouldn't sell anything other than what he's grown. You know, there's a couple of things you brought, got brought in from a few guys you knew. But agribusiness is agribusiness. I don't know if that's going to fall under, I mean, business is fine. But like I said, said many a times, neighbor one, neighbor two, who has more rights, you got the neighbor next to him, says no. He should have just as much rights as the guy asking to have them. You know, he shouldn't be pushing the other neighbor out. I've had that done to me twice, had to move because of this stuff. So if anything, I think, if anybody's going to have a business in agribusiness, if it's considered, if there's a percentage that has to be produced there, grown there, that's what it falls under, then I say, I say, stick with it. I know Ann Arbor, I looked at this years ago, they have a place that sells produce and plants and stuff, and they were bringing everything in, and Ann Arbor shut them down because they didn't meet that threshold. There's a threshold there, I mean, under that, if you don't do that, then you're going to have a very open retail shop, because that's basically what it's going to turn out. So, but like I said, we just got to make sure, like I said, it's not going to affect me, fine, but I worry about the neighbor and/or the neighbors. Like I said, the people doing this, I don't know them. I know on Bill Art Nursery, I bought nursery products from them when I was a kid working for Lepic over on fifty-nine over in Highland River area. I don't know if they're the same family, but like I said, if it affects one person, that should be enough. Their rights don't supersede the other people. So, but we do need to make sure we keep them within some kind of specification for future. But the solar farm here, I understand, yes, we do need to address it, okay? I have a lot of concerns, you know, I don't know, I hear a lot of trouble, a lot of conspiracy, I mean, smoke stans can kill a lot of things too. I don't want to see a solar farm, believe me, I don't want to see a full, I'd rather see a model. But I mean, I don't want to overrate it, but yes, you permit it, I don't want a solar farm, don't, don't get me wrong. But, you know, let's get on it and make sure, and we have to during the, the master plan, we could tweak it some more, so, but, you know, let's get on it. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Scott. Any other public comments?
Craig Droulis, appreciate for, I just want to make a simple statement about solar farms. I'm being opposed to those, eating plants for those solar or wind, pie in the sky, superficial, non-existent energy sources. At peak performance, peak conditions, solar power produces maximum twenty to twenty-five percent efficiency. And if you're planning destroying home values, property values, and home values and values in this township, then there'll be hell to pay for such a poor decision to allow that to come into our township as well as our county. Thank you.
Any other comments this time? We'll move into new business item number one. So, if I had to, if you'd like to give just the high level overview or it's not required, but if you could, it might help the planning mission.
Sure. My name's Mike Malarka, nine one four nine Center Road. So just the overview of our application basically is turning our farm to, as John says, so whether it falls under agribusiness, forestry, whatever you want to classify it, but we do custom woodworking. So we harvest and produce all our own material. We harvest trees from not only our farm, from other family farms, our property up in northern Michigan. We have our own sawmills, our own kiln, so we literally go from forest to finished product on our material, our products, and we build things such as dining room tables, countertops, fireplace mantles, right down to small decor items, you know, birdhouses, chainsaw carvings, et cetera, et cetera. So last year, we were given a home occupation permit. We were also approved to build our pole barn, which we completed, we had our inspections and all that stuff, so that the phase of where we're at now in the application of giving the land use permit is so that we can turn our, our section of our pole barn into a small little shop, little retail shopping store, basically. So what we have are finished products, again, going back to our tables and things of that nature, we would have those on display. I take those products to art shows regularly, so my products are coming and going out of my place all the time. But the times that I have people come to custom order, place and order, pick up a product, et cetera, et cetera, they can walk around the store and officially go to.
So just the overview of our application basically is turning our farm to, as John said, so whether it falls under agribusiness, forestry, however you want to classify it, we do custom woodworking. So we harvest and produce all our own material. We harvest trees from not only our farm, from other family farms, our property up in northern Michigan. We have our own sawmills, our own kiln, so we literally go from forest to finished product on our material, our products, and we build things such as dining room tables, countertops, fireplace mantles, right down to small decor items, you know, birdhouses, chainsaw carvings, et cetera, et cetera. So last year, we were given a home occupation permit. We were also approved to build our pole barn, which we completed, we had our inspections and all that stuff. So that the phase of where we're at now in the application of giving the land use permit is so that we can turn our, our section of our pole barn into a small, little shop, little retail shopping store, basically. So what we have are finished products, again, going back to our tables and things of that nature, we would have those on display. I take those products to art shows regularly, so my products are coming and going out of my place all the time. But the times that I have people come to custom order, place and order, pick up a product, et cetera, et cetera, they can walk around the store and officially go to go shop in the store. So I don't want to make a, you know, a large Walmart, I'm not looking to make any gancho amount of, of business. We want to have a few people have the ability to come over and buy raw material, finished products, place orders, things of that nature. So that's kind of a general overview of where we're at. We had on the proposal some possible future plans for down the road. I don't know if you want to discuss those now or later, but.
Well, that's fine. We may ask questions after we go through the review, but appreciate it. This time, just overview.
So I met with, I don't know if you want me to kind of walk you through the steps, so what I've done now, I've met with Livingston County Road Commission. They've been out, we have the engineer drawings, which you have the copies of there. I spoke with Kim Hillard from the Road Commission yesterday, and all we have to do is expand, we have to pave the entrance, we convert our residential approach to a commercial approach. So it's a very, very simple upgrade, but literally we have to expand it by about three feet east and west, and we have to expand the, the right of ways out above. It'll be twenty feet of pavement and then extension of the gravel going up the driveway, which is all in the, the plan, the twenty-one double A. So our driveway will be, you know, commercial approach. We've talked with the county as far as any possible well, septic, water, electric, you know, the whole rigmarole. Everything's fine with what we have, we don't need to put in a well, we don't need to put in a, a septic field, we can use a, our existing septic field for the single bathroom we'll have.
That's good, thanks, appreciate it. If you want to stay here or sit there, you can ask questions for that, but appreciate it. Thank you. And Ross, you can probably provide a good overview of where we're at in the process.
Yep, so basically, so far, we've received the application, we've received a plan review of the application. Since we've received that review, the applicant has done a very good job of putting together information to address the majority of those conditions. As far as I can tell, going through this and comparing it to the information that's been provided, there's a few questions that the planning commission would need to make a decision on. Number one question being, does the site plan information, is it sufficient adequate enough to be considered for a special land use or are we going to require a professionally engineered site plan? There are instances where that's required. Unfortunately, we don't have a whole lot of examples of agribusiness within the township to compare it to. If we did have an agribusiness, I wouldn't anticipate that it would require a full engineered site plan, but it does ultimately depend on the scale, the scope of the business, anticipated traffic, clientele, that sort of thing. As far as what I can see, based on the review that Zach prepared and the information that the applicants has provided, we're making some pretty good progress. Really, I think the biggest question, two questions here is, is the planning commission willing to accept a hand drawn site plan with the necessary specific details that are required for site plan review, or is an engineered site plan going to be required? That's question number one. The significant question number two is, do we feel that the information provided thus far is substantially complete and do we feel that it's ready to move forward to the public hearing aspect?
Thanks.
What we can do, I know that we have a little bit of a hiccup right now because we don't have Zach available to compare this initial review. We can send along the updated information to our planning consultant to have them prepare just an update, which could be potentially available for the next meeting if you choose to hold a public hearing at that time.
So this, I have one question, maybe I missed, if it's in here, did the, if you did the fire chief review the site, the site plan?
So the fire chief, because we have not finalized the build out of the barn on the inside, he said he cannot go there until we have all the final inspection completed. But based on all the information and the, I texted him pictures of what we had and what we had done, he was completely on board with, with the fire extinguishers, having water around, having smoke detectors in there. We have battery powered exit signs, lights on all the, all the doors. So he said we've gone above and beyond what we would need and he would feel.
Yeah, and my question more, that part of it will be inspected right by the county, but more along the line of access for their trucks. Like if you have the potential to have fifty people there, right? You want to be like, get in, get out, and that, that's what more, did you look at the site plan? You know, because they might have a, like right here, for example, they might want a certain dimension so they can turn around. That, that's, it's something, you know, that's important that it's not, hey, fifteen feet and then they can't turn their truck around once they get in there. Something, just, it's not a huge change in the site plan per se, but it's good to make sure it's what they need, right? If something goes wrong, it, every second counts in this business, right? With a fire, so.
And I, and I can tell you, my wife was a firefighter for many years as well. Our, our driveway by the residence is a large circle area. Being that I've been in equipment business and nursery business my whole life, I deal with trucks and trailers all the time, so my, the driveway by our residence is big enough for a semi to turn around and then extending through the wooded area back into our barn area, I have a thirty foot Ussenac trailer that I pull behind my pickup truck, and I need ample space to turn that around. So there is, as you can see, that area right there is seventy feet by a hundred and forty feet where I park my trailers, plus the little parking area in front of the barn. So there's ample room for probably twenty trucks in there without any problem if needed.
Circulation review by fire inspector could also be, you know, a condition even for final approval, especially if they want to wait until you get the initial approvals.
Yeah.
Kind of hours do you run? Like, is it similar to like Armstrong millwork down on M fifty-nine? Do you do that kind of style or what do you?
We do that and then some. So as far as we'll say, business operation goes, working time typically eight morning till about five-ish, varies sometimes four o'clock, not real late because we live there, we have neighbors. Not that my equipment is super loud, but for me, I don't want the noise. I'm sure they don't want the noise even though they can't hear it anyways. So the, the weekends are very minimal. That's typically when I would have customers come over for a scheduled appointment for a, a pickup or a, a custom order, but that's typically ten, ten to, ten to four, and most of the weekends we're gone doing shows. So it's usually two weekends out of the month we're gone and one or two weekends we're home, and it kind of varies per month. But last year I did about forty-seven art shows during the summertime, so as you can imagine, I'm not there a whole lot.
Now you mentioned that there's up to seventy, was it seventy-five cars in case of a special event? What's your anticipated traffic on regular, non-special events?
Very minimal. So on a day-to-day basis, Monday through Friday, as with typical business, you know, people working nine to five, whatever, so I might have people from, let's say, three to seven come over to go shop to pick out a piece of wood, whatever it is we have to build for them. It's usually, if I get two a day, I'm shocked. The, the weekends, three, four, five, six people, I mean, we're not talking thousands of people here. And the thing with the seventy-five car, if, it's just a thought for future possible planning, if we had a small event where we had a few local vendors, having, like a farmer's market idea, where we would have a Saturday or maybe a Saturday, Sunday type of event, and we have thirty-four acres, we have plenty of area for people to park, it's safe, it's not something we have to do, it's just a thought, that's why we put it on.
Sure.
So very niche.
Yeah, thank you.
Very niche.
Yep. It's quite unique being from, from raw material to the millwork, so we mentioned Armstrong.
Well, that's where I go all the time.
Yep. But they, they sell lumber, I don't sell lumber.
Okay, so you, you don't do any?
You do the products.
I sell, I sell slabs, fly edge slabs, and then the millworks, so the people that want to make their own stuff, we can do any cutting, finishing, sanding, and/or once they discover who we are and what I do, just go ahead and make the whole stupid thing for me and they'll come pick it up when it's done.
Have you been operating there for a while?
We moved in.
I saw your sign.
We moved in in April, we got a home occupation permit immediately to, so I could have, you know, running the business there. But we want to go to the next phase with having a small store so that we can, number one, I can have employees, number two, so that I can have a small store so that people can come and, you know, on paper legally come and shop at our place and buy product.
Now, are you going to transition at all? Like, I'm only asking because woodworking in general, like, are you planning on venturing into the finished carpentry or cabinetry making in your shop or anything?
No cabinetry, no, I'm going to, I'm going to stick with what we have is, is plenty enough to keep myself busy. But, you know, supplying material to people alone is a whole job in itself alone, doing all the other stuff to do.
And I, I respect that what you're doing here with some of the tree guys too, because I got a buddy that's big into the tree business around here, and really, whenever he does anything for me, it's always, hey, let's drop it off at Michigan Landscape, they throw in the chipper, and then you guys put it in your garden beds later. I don't, I hate seeing that, so.
So we're, we're in a form of recycling.
Yes, and I can, I can see where this, I know it doesn't fall exactly in our ordinances, but it's one of those things that, again, a lot of people don't like what Peabody's doing down there, but that is well-known, not just down here, but up in Marquette, it's a niche, it's something that brings to, like, you know, a little hidden jewel to Tyrone Township, those are the kind of things we want to keep around here.
Thank you.
So I, I understand what you guys are trying to do here. I can appreciate that.
Hey Ross, we had any complaints since this has been going on? Nothing.
Thank you.
No, and the, just how did it go in South Lion?
I'm sorry?
How did it go in South Lion as far as complaints, et cetera? I know it was, it's more populated where you were there, but.
So I started, my whole business started two years ago, I originated it, and we, everything expanded rapidly, we didn't have the space, hence why we shot out for a farm, and everything is just kind of falling in place, finding the property, finding the farm, build the barn, et cetera, et cetera. But we had zero complaints. We had putting up our, our business sign a couple of years ago, we had it up where one guy said yes, one guy said no, put a sign up, so that carpet caused a fiasco, but we took the sign down. To this day, people think we still live in South Lion and whatever, but it was, it was no problem, we never had any problems, and that's why I had to move up here though, just to be able to build larger furniture and sell a product and have a place to put stuff. I literally could build one thing at a time in my little shed that I was working out of, so.
I do have a question on your operating hours, and I think I've talked about this before, but I want to ask it one more time.
Yep.
You're using the operating hours for the building and assembly from eight to five on weekdays, which means at five you're done. You can't stay till six and run the chippers and anything, and it also means you don't work on Saturday or Sunday if you've got a job that needs to get out. So I, you know, I want to make sure that you're not limiting yourselves too much on this because eight to five is, is what you'll be stuck with, and you'll have to come back to us again if you want to change those hours.
Okay.
So if you decide that you need to work from, you know, nine till, or from ten till two on Saturday, you can't.
Okay.
And, and, you know, you have to come back and say, oh, we need to include some Saturday hours here. So be sure that this is what you want, you know, that you're going to get.
I appreciate the explanation because I, I didn't understand it that way previously, but yes, it would be the, the Monday through Friday, those hours are fine, six P M would be the latest. Saturday could be, you know, we'll say maybe nine to two or something, something like that, not going to be working on Sundays, I'll be at shows, but to, to have that, I can certainly.
Yeah, so you need to modify your statement.
That's no problem, I can do that.
So it does have the special hours to as well as.
Yeah, so.
You can include other statements there if there are going to be off-season special circumstances that allow for a little more flexibility, that may allow you to just notify the township.
Okay.
To where you can have extended hours as long as there's not any nuisance factors.
And you're, you're mentioning the operating hours, is that the same, I think, the way I understood it, what you're operating would be for myself and/or employees for building?
That should be specifically clarified as far as building, working hours, as well as shop hours.
Which I thought that's what, that's what we put on there because it would be open that time, plus the weekend would be there, so that, that's how I understood it, but I can extend the operating hours.
Yeah, we want to make sure that the, the operating hours are when the saws are running, the chippers are going, the planers are running, all that kind of stuff. So if you're working in there and it's going to be noisy, dusty, smelly, whatever you want to add to it.
Yep.
Make sure that that's the hours you want because that, that's what you're asking for, so that's what you'll be limited to.
Okay.
And then, if I may, can I add something regarding the site plan? As far as the site plan goes, one of the things that was called out in the plan review is parking. I would just recommend making sure that it's clear on the site plan, both the number of spaces delineating where there's going to be the no barrier parking, just tighten all that information up so it's there, so when you get to the public hearing aspect to get it all being readily available.
Just a quick question about that, does that need to be on that plan you just had in your hand or the other that has the drawing of the interior of the barn because there's this mark of blow up?
I would say that that should be on the actual site plan itself, showing the entire site, so you can show where the parking clearly is, where that's going to be, and you can also include a separate sheet, you know, detailing out if you so choose, or the planning commission recommends that.
And that's, that's primarily for customer parking or employee parking?
Yeah, that's verifying that it meets the, the standards for Article twenty-five for off-street parking.
Sure, go ahead.
Because right now it's a little bit vague, I mean, you, you go into a little bit of detail in your use statement, but if it can be shown on the site plan, I think that's going to benefit everyone.
Okay.
So Ross, it's the next topic probably we're going to discuss is the site plan. It's, it should be as specific as possible. So you'll learn how Kurt mentioned where your hours should be clearly defined, same thing with this, that, that way, when we're presenting it at a public hearing, it is representative of what you're intending to, to use the land for. So with that being said, the commission here has to decide, right, if we'll accept, as Ross mentioned, a site plan like this, which we are able to do, or as part of the site plan, we can require it being an engineer drawing with a stamp, but.
What we have done in the past for these types of uses is for the initial approval, if it's something that's a relatively small scale, at least for, you know, the first year or two, it would be to potentially accept a hand drawn, but if there's going to be expansion, if there appears to be nuisance factors that come up, then you may need to get into an engineered site plan. But generally, how we treat it is, for a smaller, lower impact type use, if it's not going to create any notable nuisance factors, we can generally start at this point. But if we do that, I would definitely recommend that there is a stipulation in the recommendation that any expansion moving forward, it will need to be revisited to determine if we need additional.
Well, I would guess with, without having an engineered drawing, we might want to have township engineer look at it.
Most likely, yeah, in some of those instances, if that's something, that can be done at either the planning commission or the board level. Most likely, yeah, in some of those instances, if that's something, uh, that can be done at either the planning commission or the board level.
Did you, we drew this, did you scale it, like, is this, I see the blue paper, is this pretty accurate, scale-wise?
Yeah, I mean, obviously I didn't put the entire thirty-four acre parcel on there, but it's pretty close, yes.
You gotta add this, pardon you, this, right Ross? And try to do this for submission.
Yeah, that, that's what I would recommend, because I know that that's going to come up, that, that's the one thing that I know that that wasn't totally clearly addressed.
I can do a blow, I can do a blow up of that section and have a second page to it without any problem.
Perfect.
Yep. Twenty years on the N C D, I can do all that.
I think that would work to get this going to special land use.
It could, from, from what I've seen.
Just keep the ball going.
And just, uh, Ross.
It all depends, because as special land use, you know, it's basically an open-ended thing with the township, if it becomes a problem, if they show that they violate the terms, conditions of the special land use, it can be revoked. Um, so that generally happens if there is significant nuisance factors, if there's a, a number of complaints, if the police get called out, that sort of thing, so. It's kind of a monitor as you go, especially with these types of unique uses that aren't, aren't really all that prevalent throughout the township.
And, and I can tell you from my perspective, uh, my family has owned a nursery business for eighty-five years. So I know firsthand, working seven days a week, I understand nuisance factors, I understand residing on your property and owning a business on that property. So with us living there, we are respectful people, respectful of ourselves and respectful of our neighbors. So I'm not gonna infringe on, on their doings either, but we, I, we purposely had conversations with our neighbors thus far. To make sure they're not annoying, upset, whatever, anything. And we, we do things in such a fashion that, you know, even for as an example, my, my workshop inside of our barn, uh, everything is insulated. So even running a, a planer, a saw is, is dull, I mean, you can literally be outside and hardly hear a saw running.
Those are all good details, good information, if it's not already noted in the use statement, note that. Uh, I know that you have the benefit of having significant, or a lot of distance between neighbors, you have a very large piece of property that.
Yep.
You know, could potentially accommodate the type of use, but it still should be noted and.
Sure.
Thank you.
And Ross, the only other thing that I know was brought up is a question that in ours, in our zoning ordinance, there's different types of uses that are. Like categorized in it, and if you look through like the different type of uses, this is the closest fit. I don't want to mislead, like, we're saying this is an agribusiness, you know, but it's the closest fit and maybe.
It, it could be permitted either directly as an agribusiness or as a similar use as determined by the planning commission subcommittee, when the subcommittee initially, initially met on this, they determined that. Based on the proposal, it appeared that it would clearly, clearly fit into the category of agribusiness. I think the biggest question then is the, the fifty percent number, which the way that it's written. May be open to some interpretation, but that's gonna be at the discretion of the planning commission and that's certainly the board to make that determination.
I, I think in this sense, it'd be nearly impossible to grant that, cause.
So it does state, um, I think we wanna pull up the actual ordinance, I can try to figure it out from what we have here. Cause it does say that it is to be produced onsite, but I believe there's some language on there that also says properties that are owned or maintained by the property owner that may be offsite.
Correct.
So offhand, I, I.
All right, yeah, if you just click on, uh. Yeah, I'd like, I mean, per, going back to Gero's comment, I, I've done, know some tree guys too, and, you know, it's really a shame when they cut down a thirty-inch sugar maple. I'd take the chipper, that's just such a waste.
It is, so bring it to me.
Yeah. That's what I'm asking for.
Yeah.
Win-win.
Yeah. White flower.
They lock, they'll do something for free.
Why don't you just do a control find and type it in.
Yeah, do next. That's real besides.
Yeah, I'm trying to get more involved in, in local stuff, because not a lot of local people know us.
Keep going down.
Five or less, nothing crazy.
Plus me.
They're fighting, they're fighting over the shoulder. I need one.
She could be the boss. There. The boss, people around, I can say.
I have a boss.
Oh, yes.
But at this point, we wanna make sure to provide direction, you know, if needed to the applicant, right Ross? So I think at this time, we don't have to, we can get into determination. Exactly, but, uh, things I have so far, the parking to be defined on the site plan. And the hours.
Yeah, as far as the, the specific details, the, the pertinent details of the use statement, we can request ultimately that they get incorporated onto the site plan document. But that's more of a buttoning up later on type of thing, just making sure that all the pertinent information is consolidated.
Yeah, and.
Cause that, that info is there, it's just in the use statement.
Would be the, I guess from my standpoint, it wouldn't be the best way to do it, so it's tied to the site plan.
Yeah.
That's how we've.
There are gaps, so.
Would be a conditional.
Is there any other items we need from the applicant?
So now I guess we get to the two questions, are we okay with what we have currently, number one, uh, to move forward, number two is, should I schedule a public hearing for next month?
The one item I think would be good to note is, obviously it'll make this, the site plan get bigger, but. Is the distance to neighboring properties and, and buildings, right, and obviously it might, it's not gonna be perfect. Because you're, they're, they're quite a ways away if you look at the.
That could be a note too.
But yeah, just to know, because, so it's clearly sheltered or not.
Just, just note it on the plan. To, to their property lines, is that what you're looking for? Or to their buildings?
To the buildings, right, because it is.
As, as it relates to what, to the.
To where you're gonna be doing the work.
Okay.
Right.
It's as much information as possible, so you can include both property line and also, you know, approximate to structure that.
As, as we mentioned, most of these things we're reviewing and surrounding it in regards to the potential for nuisance, right? And just clearly good if it's documented.
From my workshop and even the new barn that's built, um, even with the new barn here, minimum four to five hundred feet to another. Residence or any other structure around, minimum, and that would be the, the gentleman to the, uh.
That's a, that's an ag barn up there.
Southwest, that's a barn, that is correct, that's a barn, uh, which is still five hundred feet from barn to barn. But there's a, there's a house closer to the side of the road on our west, west lot line, right, uh, there, that's where his house is at. So you're talking five to six hundred feet from barn to that home. And then the other home, which is to the directly east of it.
No, just, yeah, fine, just as long as it's on there, and then the only other item that I had was to make sure it's in the use statement that it mentions that. This will continue to be your primary residence also.
Isn't it?
Yep. I think, I don't know, you guys have anything else this time? Are you clear on what we need?
They've all written them. They would consider it for next month. For the year.
Yeah, cause I was like hearing the neighbors say when they get the notice.
They're begging us to.
Ross, is that right?
They're begging us to open a store soon so they can come shop.
Oh, it's not always an idea.
No. Ross should provide it to engineer for him to review.
That can be determined at the public hearing.
Anything else for that item? Okay, we'll go to old business, item number one is master plan, and we, we are gonna get too heavily involved into it. I know it was mentioned in the public comment, and this is what we were going to talk about, is that for each of the planning commission members. To review the existing land use map and make sure to note any areas that are incorrect, I know. I sent a list to Ross, just a few ones that we've been recently involved with that we know are incorrect.
I also previously provided a list to Zach, which I have not yet seen an updated version, so I'll just make sure that we incorporate that all into the feedback that we give to Doug. The next time around.
So just for the public's awareness, that's where we're at, at this moment, and then the, the goal is, once the existing land use map is accurate. Then we'll use that with our future land use map as part of the discussion of areas we think maybe need to be changed. Or modified on the future land use map, that will go into the master plan. So that's one of the, a lot of the articles we've gone through in the master plan, we have not got to the future land use map part of it. And where we are in the process, and I don't know if you did have any comments on master plan at this time, but the, the workshop will be dedicated to the master plan topic. That is our intent for the next week.
So, so we may have a future, I guess, may not, rough draft by now, cause that was.
We like. Unfortunately, given Zach's, Zach's departure from the company, we've, we've hit a little bit of a bump in the road. Um, so unfortunately, we're a little bit behind, we're still, still looking towards getting it done before the end of the year.
That was, that was where we were at.
Yeah.
So I don't know, same thing, there's not much to discuss at this point on that. Go to the next.
All the yellows and the green here, isn't that, is that because it's single-family housing, so, so this is existing land use but not existing zoning?
It's, no, it's not zoning, so just to clarify some of the confusion, um, as far as you're looking at, i- if you're looking at the F R area. We have some green ones, some yellow ones.
Right.
Uh, the yellow ones are just smaller parcels.
So that's, that, so this isn't zoning, this is just use?
Right, yep. Okay, it's just what is the parcel currently being used for, and it's accurate for the most part, but it is just generated based on general aerial view, G I S data, that sort of thing. So there's obviously gonna be some, some conflicts, some mistakes, and that's what we're gonna work on identifying.
Good question. Ross, nothing else? Next item, just the overview there, then the next item we have, which many people made comments about, what's that Ross?
Well, we have called the public before, that's.
Yeah, yeah, sure. But I don't know if, um, the public, we could go through what we have on its utility scale, solar first, and then go to public comment. You, you just wanna make a motion?
I'd amend the agenda.
Yeah, we, we will do that, I just, I saw a few people nod, that's okay, we can go through what we have. So I'll entertain a motion to move miscellaneous business ahead of called the public.
So move.
Support. All in favor? Okay, so. So what this is, is here it shows a review by the Livingston County Planning Commission, principal planner of our ordinance that we have existing today. And they can give feedback or recommendations, so Ross, I know you probably talked to Rob about this, and Rob spent in our meetings before, but. If there's some high-level items you wanna go through, the bullet points is extensive.
Well, I, I said that previously, I, I think the biggest, uh, recommendation that I, I caught here, there are some good recommendations in here in terms of wildlife and things. But as far as the largest substantial change that is being proposed potentially by the county planning would be, uh, removing it from the F R district. Which would limit it specifically to some of our commercial residential, or commercial industrial districts as opposed to any residential districts, which currently we only allow for it in F R. That's the only residential district that we would allow for this use in currently. So the reason that we requested this review is just to ensure that we are doing the right thing, tightening up our, our restrictions as much as possible to ensure that. A big company's not gonna come up and for lack of a better term, bully the township into letting them put in their solar thing without us. You know, adequately.
Ross in there, um, did, I don't know, I hadn't talked to Rob recently, but did they mention, um, any context of what other townships are doing or have done? Just curious if they.
To a certain extent, yes, I mean, you look more towards the, uh, kinda central northern Livingston County, that's where a lot of these municipalities are being approached. With some of these larger-scale solar type, uh, developments, um. One good thing that we do have going for us is we have very limited land. We don't have the large tracts available that some of these other municipalities do have. So I think that's one of the things that's kept us safe thus far, um, we have not been approached to this point. Um, but we just wanna make sure that we're doing the best that we can to make sure that, uh, you know, the community's happy.
So the county is ready, then we take it out of the F R?
Yep, it does not, it does not meet the intent of our F R district. But there's also a lot of other good recommendations there as far as tightening up the regulations that we have, we cannot outright say no.
Right, you can't.
Can't do this, but we can control it within reason, and as time progressive, progresses, since this is a fairly new concept, uh, we learn more. From, uh, you know, occurrences in other municipalities, and that's what the county is a little bit more in tune to than, uh, we might be. So that's why we wanted to get their input, and that, that's basically where we are right now, is we wanna keep this on the radar and, uh, potentially move forward. Uh, so right now, I would say, uh, look over, do a review, uh, give us thoughts, comments, uh, I think we wanna revisit it at an upcoming meeting. And see if we wanna move forward with initiating the amendment. Um, we are doing our master plan, I know that's number one priority, but just in case, if we wanna play it safe, we might wanna work this into.
I don't believe there are any solar farms in Livingston County right now.
Not existing currently, not utilities.
What does utilities give by definition?
Um, I don't have the official definition, but it's.
Like not private.
I mean, did I see, when you got that one down on the north side of ninety-six, it's probably the.
Yeah, that's a little.
Right, though, that's where the nursery used to be, that's not hundreds of acres.
No.
Did DT build there, did DT purchase that?
Ross, Ross.
I know it's DT now.
Ross, we need a lot of our property, but some of these persons.
But I'm wondering if there's something on twenty-acre parcels.
Yeah, that's what's kept us safe for the time being, so.
So I'll tell you, I'll tell you my concerns, so when Zach was here and we were going through the master plan, one of the things that lit up that I remember very much was, uh, that, that he mentioned that, that Webber was forcing. Uh, townships and counties to have so much of a percentage of clean renewable energy, um, because of that, that forcing. townships and counties to have so much of a percentage of clean renewable energy, um, because of that, that force, you know? I have a little bit taken back, how does that affect us?
Um, at this time, I'm not a hundred percent on it, but I, I don't believe that it's a mandatory thing that can be forced right now, but we do, it is mandatory that we do allow for the types of uses. If we simply do not have the, the available land, we don't have the infrastructure to support it, then.
So as long as we just keep not having infrastructure, we're good again.
So if it takes, if it comes out of FR, it's a global, it's allowing industrial and all commercials?
Uh, let's see, let me just verify here, not all commercial, we do allow it in, uh, FR, PCI, Pyro A, Pyro B, so, and Pyro C, so just FR, PCI, and all the Pyro districts.
And there, there really isn't enough land in commercial or the other areas.
Not currently zoned, it would require a rezone prior.
Put it, where's the S off like Pyro, right?
It would need to be rezoned prior.
Okay.
Two of Pyro districts.
But this feature.
But it is FR right now.
Future land use Pyro.
They could apply for it right now as long as we have the FR. But if it's no longer permitted in FR, they would need to be rezoned.
But Ross, what is the golf course zone?
FR.
FR, also, it's the same thing. It's where you have potential where someone, like, I think we've talked about it in a different context, not the context of solar, but very, hey, I'm done, now I retire and you sell.
You never know until it happens.
Exactly, that is, I'm just, that helps, I provide.
I think we should move on this sooner than later, so we'll be, do we get this rolling?
Um, if we want to get, get it rolling, um, I can go ahead and reach out to Garlott Wardman and have them do something on it, um, we can talk about it. You know, as early as next week, uh, next meeting, next regular meeting, obviously not the time for the workshop, but.
Yeah, but people need to understand, right now, we don't have land that would be of a size right now that people would purchase.
Yep.
The idea of, of the solar farm was to rent land from the landowner and put a solar farm on.
Yeah, it's like leasing from farmers or anything to that nature.
There was, I see multiple.
Long-term leasing, fifty, forty, thirty acres.
A lot of small ones.
Well, most always they're, they're looking for contiguous property.
Yeah. And they need a couple hundred acres, so they have profitable ones, so unless they can get adjoining properties to, to rent from.
You can actually make a profit. Sixty acres, sixty to eighty acres, I know that that, so that's what my family is going to do up in where I'm from.
Right, but right now, the, the utility companies don't.
They're not going to be interested in.
Oh, they were, no, they were, they were actually, they offered to us.
And it is.
How long ago?
Like a year ago, they offered to us.
So it's not, it's not like people are knocking on the door.
Yeah, so, but either way.
I just want to make you guys aware.
There was a lot more interest here in like twenty eighteen.
Right.
Is where we actually had the larger scale solar people coming in and approaching.
Right.
Uh, farmers, large property owners.
Yeah, but with, and not to be political, but with Michigan's legislature going a hundred percent Democrat, now there's probably going to find money to push this some more.
Right.
So we need to, we need to move.
We need to stop there.
So the, I think, Ross, it sounds like we need, um, we actually, it sounds like planning commission wants to look at it, right?
We'll get moving forward.
Yeah, okay, good. Yeah, and the wind farm issue isn't really an issue here because we're not in an area where there is enough breeze to get a wind farm going.
Unless guys talk.
I think, is there any other?
He didn't hear you.
You gotta go over to my house and have dinner.
So if there's nothing else on that for planning, so we'll move to call to the public. I'm just.
Kim Prepple, I think that their, um, comments on the wildlife and the natural resources are key things, especially for us, because I think the water table is a big, big issue in our world that if we have a pretty tight requirement on that. Yeah, so I think those are, yeah, you don't want to miss those.
No, thanks.
It's a good point, yeah.
Only because we brought it up tonight, and I know we dealt with it in the future, because I had to deal with it down for my house, and we are dealing with it. Peabody. And, um, and we're coming, coming in looking for, um, home occu- ho- occupation or ag business, and they want to have special events and bring vendors in, that's not home occupation, bringing people to sell their products. And I had to deal with it down for my house, you know, you could bring in ten people, sell their products, that's not right, you give them home occupation for themselves, I visit. I've seen signs that do, I probably buy stuff from, yes. Um, but, uh, we got, that's something we should deal with in the future, how much expansion, how much, how much, how much you can let them bring in there? Or anybody, so that's something we got to deal with on the master plan too, for ag business and home occupation, you know, doing his own business and selling his own product, fine. It's like if somebody's got a contractor, he brings his equipment in, he's got his workers, he comes and goes, and, but, um, and, and having events, I mean, that's going to probably be a problem with the neighbors, especially when you got that many trucks and cars coming in, but, um, other than that, you know, like I said, I, I don't live there, I know the family, I mean, I don't know personally, I got, I was a kid, I bought from there, I used to pick, let his trucks down there and buy plants for him and the beach, so, I mean, you guys don't live, been there long, you don't know. But, um, I want to make something clear tonight, about something to that, I've become to these meetings for a long time. I don't come here to gripe or complain, I make, when I got something next to my house, I'm just concerned about the neighborhood, my neighbors, and I won't, if I don't want them next to my house, I'm going to support my neighbors because we don't want them next to your house, you know, that lamp, or anything. I, you know, like I said, some of these things that are said, like, you said nager, it's not nager all the time, Steve, it's, uh, it's, it's somebody else's point of view, right? I mean, you said, you know.
I said it's not.
I was, you know, but it's not, it's just somebody else's point, and I look out for my neighbors, Steve, I look out for you, you know?
Appreciate that.
It's not next to, I, you know, you know what I've got around my, I was pushed out of my house and followed, well, I was the father of my very first house, I was a young man. I had a sexual offender, put back in the home with his kids, and I had a little boy, and that was my very first house, fixed up, and I told the son of a gun, the court put it back, and I said, you step over that line, you're done. So I just moved out, I got pushed out of that house, I bought a house over there on Harton Road, I, I bought a beautiful shepherd puppy. Paid a lot of money for it, and they put, people moved in, moved in, put a stock in, and say, yeah, happy, they had more dogs than the township with a lot. They were digging on their ice pants, my poor puppy got so agitated, by the time he got older, he was so aggressive, I had to put him down. Let's see, I, I had this a little thing, you know what I'm saying, I'm tired of moving away from the stuff, so that's why I'm, I stand up for this kind of stuff. But as a township, I just come up here, I don't belong to any organizations, I'm Scott Dietrich. I know, I'm not part of any cults or, or, or any group, and you know, I'm just saying, I've been coming to these for years, I've got nothing against these people or anybody else, I look out for the people down there. And I do know that we did have, I know we're going to have a public hearing, and it's going to be interesting, it doesn't bother me, I like what he's selling there, but I am concerned that he's going to start bringing vendors and, and, um, having, that's because if it's fine, people, they was, like I said, the day was reported, fine, I can see what, after they turned out the wedding barn, then, they might have an issue with that, having people come, that many people at a time. But having home, you can see we had customers coming in and him doing a product here, I don't think that's a problem, so, but we'll see what happens in public hearing, you know, so.
Thanks, guys.
I don't complain anymore. Yes.
Mental kind of full drive, um, so I just, I heard someone say something about the negative, you know, people not wanting Peabodys, I actually didn't hear anybody ever say that they didn't want Peabodys there, me included, Scott included, et cetera, we all thought it was great. Uh, in fact, I think after his presentation, I said something to the effect of, uh, Garrett Peabody for supervisor, I thought he made a great presentation and he seemed reasonable, et cetera. All we are concerned about is everybody following rules, if there are rules, let's make everybody follow them, if there aren't any rules, then let it go. So, um, to, to Scott's point, he's just concerned if, you know, and, and I think you make great points too, Ross, if you're going to do something, put it in the proposal so it's all there and then, you know, can be voted on. But again, I didn't have anything against them, I just, I just want to see things done correctly and hopefully township doesn't get sued from other people, you know? When they're not allowed to operate, but others are, that's all I wanted to say.
Thanks, Ken.
Thanks.
Any other public comment?
Change this, it's terrible.
Any other public comment at this time?
Steve? Steve had a question. I assume you guys haven't gone to, you know, I brought this up a year or two ago, that, you know, when you guys get these, these projects proposed, you need to go look at them. Anybody go there at all?
We.
You know, when you go there, you can determine real easy whether the plans look like what is there, and also, you know, if you, if you, well, you know, do we need to have an engineer? Or these people spent a whole bunch of money, you know, to do a drawing that, you know, is probably unnecessary. You know, unless you guys see something that's missing, or, or if what they provided isn't accurate, then, you know, that will trigger, you know, the next step. So I'm, I'm grateful that you go look at it, at least part of it, you know, necessarily a while you gotta go, but at least a couple, you know, so you get the gist of what's there. Um, the solar stuff, I caught wind of these farms being proposed in Livingston County about two months ago, and it was directly related to the stuff out by Kahakta and Conway Township, which it looks massive amount of areas that they're, that they're targeting over there. So I've seen that and I've heard some of the stories, I've been to a few meetings in various places, town planning, went to Marion Township's meeting last Friday that they had at Parkville Middle School, they had a couple hundred people there, you know, uh, it was before the border, but they were rewriting and working on their ordinance, trying to tighten it up, and their struggling was, you know, all the different things pertaining to it, because there's a a big push by the state and even beyond that to do these things, they rewrote all of the, you know, the definitions for agriculture, you know, what's, how, what's that PA, whatever it is for the. That, that includes solar farms now, they, they really, they say that is farming, so, you know, so get used to it, because they're pushing it hard, and you know, it's likely our township's going to be involved because of the, because we got the main transmission elements coming through here. So don't think there's not property that they'll use if they can get it, if we're going to allow it, or even if we can fight it, because I'm kind of, you know, it's unsure at this point what's going to happen.
Okay, that's why.
The state, with the way the makeup is right now, they might rewrite big rules that affect, you guys might not even be sitting up here is what could happen, because the the state could take that over if they're, you know, insane enough to do it, which, you know, as we're moving along, that's, could happen.
Hey, thanks, Steve. Thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Seeing any, okay, go to a journey.